Yeah, go live.
All right, good evening. At seven oh two, I will want to order the December sixteenth meeting of the Columbia Borough Planning Commission. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Wickenheiser.
Here.
Vice Chair Lynn.
Here.
Secretary Lynn.
Here.
Member Evan.
Here.
Member Chris Hartman.
Here.
And Member Leclerc.
Here.
Okay, at this time, could we stand for a moment of silent prayer? Pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, following the agenda, do I have a motion with regards to the minutes of the Planning Commission for November eighteenth that are in your package?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Have a motion from Brad, second from Tiff. Any discussion corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, on our agenda this evening, we have the review for two properties that will be going before the zoning hearing board on New Year's Eve, December thirty first.
No way.
Are they really having it that night?
Really, really.
At what time?
Seven o'clock. We have, and what our procedure is for the zoning hearings is we ask those parties who are going before the board to come to planning to present what you will be to the zoning hearing board. We are a recommending body, and we will make, if we decide to, a recommendation to the zoning hearing board pertaining to the properties in question. Ours is not the final say, the zoning hearing board is the final say, but the Planning Commission is a party to those zoning hearings, that they do listen to what we as Planning Commission have felt the direction that the rolling should go. Okay, so the first property here is four seventy-five Locust Street, Jalen Anderson. You're requesting a variance for zoning relief from the Borough Code, I'm not going into it, the permitted uses, that you want to open a tattoo parlor at four seventy-five Locust Street, which is a downtown commercial. Your variance, you would need the variance for that because tattoo parlors are permitted in the highway commercial. Okay? We do have your letter in here, if you would, if members have questions from you, if you would care to present.
The letter and pictures.
The pictures are really interesting. I, I need to ask, when did you set up the property?
I settled about a month after the ordinance changed.
So you settled in September? Okay, that, that.
No, you settled in October, you settled in October.
Oh.
I'm, I'm in real estate, so I checked it out online. So I'm gonna tell you, you settled on October twenty-second, so I'm just saying, you've been in here. My question to you is, why didn't your agent do their due diligence? Or did you not share with them what you planned to do?
Everyone was on board with the plan and none of us caught it. I had looked into the ordinances.
But nobody called the Borough directly?
No.
That was your agent's problem, because your agent should have done their due diligence for you. Okay, I'm just saying because it gets caught a lot, not just in your case, but in a lot of other cases, that agents or newer agents or even seasoned agents, they just let it slide by and think, well, I care and I don't really know them that well, or whatever. The relationship now has been severed because of what they have done and not you, not, not, not done their due diligence in helping you secure a property that you can be there for years if this doesn't go forward.
Yeah, it's definitely something I have discussed with my real estate agent since then, I brought it up to her. I'm mainly hoping that this goes well, this process, but if it doesn't, I don't have to compromise the process that I put for the real estate agent.
So you live upstairs?
I do.
Jalen, I read, Jalen Wright. I read your letter, it's very well written, and I like your dream. I looked at your photos, it looks like you took a photo of the building and somehow used artificial intelligence to put in what it would look like once you have it finished. It looks great. I am concerned that the ordinance right now is against you. And until we make a decision, I'll hold my, my vote, but right now. I love this brass lady set up the, the photo here. Everything you put together for us is, is really beautiful. I have a slight concern. How do I say this without offending? With tattoo parlors, not necessarily like the one that you would have, because the way you wrote your letter is, this is going to be scaled up completely different than other tattoo parlors that we have in Columbia and have had in Columbia. Now, I had one that was directly across the street in our residential district, and it was really bad. It was riffraff all night long and on and off police, and I don't see that with you. First of all, either just looking, are you together? Just looking at the both of you? I don't, I don't see that. So that's, my only concern is riffraff, but I see you have a different dream than the people that live across the street from me. They're gone, another one came in, they were worse than the first one, and they're gone. And now, we're not even allowing this situation to happen again. I hope your dream comes true. And one way or another, your dream's gonna come true. You're welcome.
This is so close to being within the highway commercial district.
And I would share, if you're finished.
Yes.
I don't wanna interrupt, okay? That not only is it very close, and typically, my concern would be to absolutely not recommend in favor of another tattoo parlor, because we have so many in Columbia. However, seeing what you presented and in that beautiful building where it is, would be, to me, honestly, a very nice fit, because it's completely different, it looks very artsy, very upscale, like Brad said, and it, you know, that had been an art studio for a little while, the owner is an art, used to be an artist himself, yes, Mr. Herman Sater. So, the way you presented here is completely different than your typical tattoo parlor, and I think, like Brad said, your clientele would also be different, and you would just have the probably one or two people at a time, one car probably, vehicle-wise. So, I know this goes against the norm, probably, but I would recommend in favor, because I, I think it's beautiful what you're presenting, and completely different than the others that we have.
Jalen, I didn't get an opportunity to read everything, I tried to read as much as I could, but what would the hours be?
The hours would be, like, this is hours, I usually start around eleven and then use around nine.
Okay, so no late night hours? And Monday through Friday, or weekends, or?
I don't do Sundays, every day it's, I kind of give or choose, but it's eleven through five, most weekends.
Okay. And now, I know the one that we had across the street, when the zoning officer at the time was Jeff Helm, he only allowed them to have, I don't know what the ordinance says now, Mary, but he only allowed them to have. By appointment only. What does it, what does it say now?
I don't know. I'm not sure. I wondered that myself.
I don't.
I don't think the ordinance addresses that.
I don't think the ordinance directs.
This is ours.
Yeah, but if, are by appointment only or not? However, I do know that a lot of the.
There was a large fee involved, and, and the gentleman did not want to pay that fee. So Jeff said, you're not going to pay that fee, then you're appointment only. So.
And see, this most recent ordinance, that does not get in to the tattoo and the body art. This, all this ordinance did was change where it could be.
Right.
Right.
That's all that did, so you would have to go back to the.
Away.
Oh.
The body piercing, the tattoo, to that ordinance to check out anything with regard to hours.
Have you applied for the license through the Borough for the per? How it worked out?
I, yeah, that is tough in terms of timing.
Right.
I mean, I. Yeah, I, I mean, I think.
One building next to a highway commercial.
To me, the fact that you live there says a lot. You probably.
That's what, excuse me, that's what I wanted to, I did wanna add that too. You're exactly what we were looking for, to have owner occupied business on the first floor and the owner living there.
Yeah.
And we appreciate, I appreciate you supporting all the Columbia businesses, and you plan to, to decorate it, and also that you chose Columbia because of liking Columbia, so that means a lot, I appreciate that.
You probably, you know, for the hearing, you probably wanna be willing to accept or even put some conditions on the table like that. I mean, the fact that, you know, maybe it does kinda loosen up the.
Board.
The situation, yeah, the board, that you do, that you, you live in the same building, you own the property, you know, I don't know how they could possibly make that a condition, that that's kinda like part of the whole deal, but, you know, that also may help with some of just, you have buy-in, you're there, you live there, you have a vested interest in whether, you know, it's a, a good downtown, but one that also kinda like where people can live without, you know, having a lot of trouble in the middle of the night. So that's part of it, and I think that also, maybe if you came up with, like, here's the hours that you're willing to kinda live within, so even, you know, kinda putting those on the table and say, you know, we don't want this to be a, you know, up until two in the morning type of thing.
Right. I think Justin's right, the fact that you're keeping it to restricted hours, restricted days, and that you're living there, you have a vested interest because you're living there in the building and keeping the building and sidewalk and everything neat, the way Mr. Herman Sater did. I think that's the way that I, once it gets past us, that's the way I would present it to the zoning board.
Yeah.
Would it be more appealing for it was appointment only that you were running, or?
I don't know, I don't really know the differ, you know, I mean, I mean, the difference, but I don't know what difference it makes on just kind of, to me, it seems like something that there's a decent end point in the evening or night or whatever, and it's a plus that you're, you have a vested interest in what's going on there, you know?
Question, do the other tattoo parlors have to go by appointment only?
No, because there was a.
And are they owner occupied? Do they live in the building that the tattoo?
Not that I'm.
Not sure.
Well, one of them has closed down on Locust Street, the one next to the.
The one that's closed on Locust Street?
Yes, the one down there in Rhodes's, where Rhodes has his, had his property.
One on Cherry Street.
Next to the, next to the church there, next to the former bank, to the church, there was a tattoo in there.
Down, I don't know.
That has closed, no, the one down at two oh seven is still open, the one down next to the forest, which is still open.
And they do offer special events that you can walk in and.
And needless, that's just apartments above that.
Right, right.
And I was told that Butcher's not doing tattooing anymore.
I don't think he is either.
I heard that he's not doing it anymore, so you.
And the one on Cherry Street closes well, yeah, so.
Oh, it did?
Did it?
I thought it did.
Oh, it signs or hat, okay, well.
Okay.
The last we saw, but that's.
I was looking at the downtown, I, I was.
I don't, I don't think that it would, it would help you or hurt you to be by appointment only or to be open.
It wouldn't hurt to ask them if that would help them be more inclined to.
I would start with hours.
Yeah, if it was my parlor, I would start with hours like you, like you do.
Then if push came to shove, you know, if they wanted to tighten the condition, but.
I know at the time, it was because of a very large fee, that the man said, I refuse to pay. And so, the zoning officer said, okay, you can remain open, but it's by, these are the conditions.
So zoning hearing, you're asking the zoning hearing board for a variance, right?
Yes.
And special, what's the special exception part? I guess just a variance.
It's just the variance.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's a tougher, I got you, that's a tougher ask, because you're saying, yeah, I'd like to do what the ordinance specifically says, you know, not to, but that's where you, you're trying to differentiate yourself, here's the situation, why? Part of it is, you do have a, maybe not a legal hardship, but the fact that you kinda got caught in, you know, a tough period between when you could settle on the property, put the application in, or do whatever you needed to do to, you know, get the zoning permit for the use, and then you're grandfathered in, you know, so even though it's totally legal what happened, you do have a little bit of that to say, you know, like, this is, you know, you were looking at this property, you tried to buy this property, and then the ordinance changed, this is why you bought it. It won't hurt.
And decided to live there.
And decided to live there, yeah, right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think that's really kinda how you have to approach it to the hearing. The zoning hearing board is supposed to stay tight to the book, but, you know, you start to kinda pile on a lot of these circumstantial things, and it kinda paints a different picture how it could work out.
So further discussion, or does this board wish to make a recommendation to the zoning hearing board with regard to four seventy-five Locust Street?
I would make a motion that we recommend in favor of supporting.
Second.
Okay, so Tiffany and Dustin are making a recommendation to the zoning hearing board regarding four seventy-five Locust Street to request the variance for zoning relief.
Yes, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So, at least, going into the zoning hearing, you will have the support of the Planning Commission, and I think it's based on your, you're living there, for making that what we see the downtown as business and residents, and your willingness to possibly, you know, work on the hours of operation. Okay. Alrighty.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck. If you, if you wanna leave, feel free to leave.
All right, yes. Bye.
Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas, good luck.
Okay, next on our agenda is Wayne Williams with the property at five fifteen Chestnut Street, requesting a variance for zoning relief for a short-term rental in a low-density residential zoned area. We have pictures here.
Also have its, I don't mean in the deck, but also, I was made aware that some neighbors, but one or two neighbors had some terms.
You're Wayne?
Yes.
Okay.
Wayne Williams.
Yes.
And I was made aware of that just last season, so I took the liberty to take pictures, take additional pictures, then I passed it around during the meeting. So some, so what you guys have now, if you have some.
Right. Okay, we have a front of the residence, we have from the other side of the street, your garage area in the back, those are the pictures we have here.
Are you planning to live there and rent rooms, or are you just planning to rent the whole building and let someone else manage it?
Yeah.
Yep.
My voice is affected by my medical condition, so I can't yell.
For you.
So, tomorrow, our plan with the property is to keep it fifty percent occupied, short-term. This is my dream home, I purchased it, this coming March would make seven years ago. And a couple years into me purchasing the property, I got diagnosed with a rare form of cancer. I was a fluent avid entrepreneur at the time, and I was able to, with treatment, live my normal life. As time went on, as time progressed, therapies have time limits. So, the cancer will then obviously progress because therapies become ineffective, ultimately affecting my physical ability to do what I love as an entrepreneur. And so that's how we're here. I don't wanna sell my property, and I don't wanna lose my property, so I intend on, again, having it occupied fifty percent of the time, that way it would cover my mortgages, my mortgage utilities, and then I would have some, obviously some funds to survive thereafter. So that's the overall, like, intent with the property.
Do you live there?
I do currently live there now, yes.
Would you continue to live there?
I will continue to live there, the fifty percent of it, the other fifty percent of the time, that I won't have it occupied.
Okay, so you won't be there when it's occupied?
No, so, so, so it's, so what I intend to do is Airbnb, and the reason I, I chose Airbnb is because Airbnb has their own guidelines and their own policy. Hosts, or potential hosts, within, along, on top of whatever municipality's ordinances exist. So, I've been at this for a year and a half now with the Borough Office, excuse me, and I'm not gonna say I know the Borough's ordinances by heart, but I just had a briefing last week, Thursday, with Elise Matt, Paula wasn't in on that meeting, but I've met with Paula Matt, and any, and any other representatives of zoning building code enforcement, and, and I have no problem being and staying code compliant. Upon my initial interest in short-term rental, I did begin to alter the property to make it code compliant. I didn't have to do much, because the property was already a rental property when I purchased it, so it already met the criteria to be a long-term, so someone with a twelve or twenty-fourth month, twenty-four month lease, so that's all your smoke detectors, your, your fire extinguishers, first aid kits, parking, et cetera. There were just, there was a couple things that I needed to do just to make it short-term, and, and I'll add this, I did make a lot of alterations through the years, because again, it's my dream home, and I made, I made those alterations for myself and my family, my children. It's just, again, unfortunately, my health has deteriorated beyond my control, prompting this, but I intend. To go, choosing Airbnb gives myself and the community regulatory's that we would have, that I would have to follow, again, outside of the Borough's ordinances, which Airbnb is, is very supportive, like, I, I wouldn't be able to host or post the property unless there was a license issued by the Borough. Therefore, making it legal, because there's, there's liabilities, they provide hosts with insurances, I would have printed all this out, but there's so much, so many documents that Airbnb provides their hosts, you, everyone in here would get lost. But, but I assure you that, I, I'll just give an example, when there, when there is a guest that books for Airbnb, and I don't know if anyone in here is familiar with the process or not, but when a, when a guest books a Tom Sutt, there, you have to, as a host, you have to take pictures of the property before the host, before the guest even arrives. Upon their, upon their departure, you have to document the property within twenty-four hours of them leaving. The Borough has a, an ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals that we, host owners or managers or all parties involved, have to inspect the property immediately or between each vacancy, or each occupancy. So, that's just one example of how Airbnb and any municipality that is organized and cares about the community, how it could work hand in hand. And, and again, that's why I picked it, I do not, I don't want to deteriorate the community. I, I feel that I've been a positive addition to the community during my time there. I, I don't, I, I have an idea what my neighbors would say, but I'm not them, so, but I would like to think that there would be positive reviews about how I have been in the community, and, and how I consider my neighbors, living in the community. My sole purpose of doing this, again, as I said earlier, is, is, I, it's either, it's either I sell the property, which, this is my only primary residence, and I love my house, I love Columbia, I don't see myself leaving. Mr. David, tell you, over the last couple of years, I might have tried to leave, but, 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 but Columbia just called me back, and, and, and I, again, I wanna keep my property. And, and I don't know if I'm going to do Airbnb permanently, it's just, I may have to have, I may have to get what's called a stem cell transplant in somewhere in the near future, one to two, maybe even three years from now, which would ultimately cause me to be in a facility minimally six months. At, during that time, I mean, I'm just trying to prepare for that time, and, and I don't have, I mean, I don't have anyone to, I'm, I'm single, so I don't have anyone to pay mortgage during these times, and I've had hospitals, a couple hospitals. During these times, and I've had hospitals, a couple of hospital stints. Four or five days. So, so during these times where I physically just can't, where I can't even fend for myself. Should, should the worst happen. Hospitalized or placed in the facility for an extended period of time. I could then just have a, a management company just step right in and take over. And then they would, excuse me, they would legally have to communicate, obviously, with the borough for inspections. I don't foresee any incidents. What, what I would charge nightly. Kind of like, kind of, kind of advertises the property towards families. So that limits the type of guests that, that would rent, if you will. And then also. I'm going to do. What's recommended by, by Airbnb for this type of property is like a three night minimum. So. At the nightly rate, we're kind of. Like, we're kind of weeding out unwanted guests. And then I ultimately have the ability to pick who I rent to. So it's not, there are some rental properties, there is, there are rental properties. Where I've seen where the landlord does not care who I rent to.
And they are all long term.
And they are all long term, yes.
Long term, right.
However, some of those long term tenants I wish weren't long term. Okay. Which, which in case, if there was a, and I do want to stress this. If there is a short term tenant that causes any problem for any reason. Airbnb's policy is immediate, immediate termination of lease and they have immediate eviction. So if the police are called, if there's a disturbance, there's no parties allowed. At Airbnb, after a certain time, at, at the nine o'clock, there's no parties, there's no loud music. I mean, again. It's pretty much what the borough. Airbnb's guidelines, policies, procedures for both host and guest. Really coincide with the borough and, and even goes beyond the borough's ordinances in, in, in some instances. So. In, in short, I'm not. I, I don't intend on having any incident. Excuse me, and if, and if there are any incidents, obviously I'm going to follow all of guidelines. Policies, procedures. And, and the short term tenants will be gone. I mean, that's just it.
Wayne, when this property would be rented out, where would you be?
So.
Cause I would assume that you would be managing it.
That's correct. So the borough's ordinance, I believe, if I can remember correctly is.
Yeah, there's a distance.
There's a distance.
Right.
Like ten miles or twenty, something like that. So I do have friends local here in Columbia that I could stay with during the time. I would have to stay here in Columbia in Lake County. Close by. I can't physically do. A lot of the maintenance that. Once able was, I was able to. However, I do have. I do have relationships. With local contractors, licensed and insured.
My, my concern was. Where would you be?
Sure. Right here in Lake.
When, when that property is being used.
Right here in Lake County.
And. Is there sufficient parking to the rear of the property and back of those garages?
Is there outside any question?
In the back of the property where the garages are. Can vehicles park in back of there?
Yes.
And be out of the alley?
Yes. So right now I have a, my work van is parked back there. I didn't leave it, I didn't. Have the van in the picture, just so you guys get clear. So two vehicles can park in front of both garage garage.
Okay.
You mean lengthwise, lengthwise?
Yes.
Parallel.
Yes, parallel, yeah.
Parallel. So the reason you need this variance is because you are in a low density residential. And the short term rentals are only permitted in medium density residential business areas.
Correct.
And you would comply with the single family detached home. Your issue is the zoning district that you are in.
Correct.
Correct. Anyone have any questions here?
Excuse me. The cancer spread. Recently and swallowed my throat. So talking for extended periods of time agitates my throat. So please bear with me.
I have a comment. Can I mention something?
Yes.
There are birds that are stopping Airbnb. Strasburg Littit is stopping all Airbnbs. So there's a reason why they don't want them. And I pulled it up, it says Littit's PA isn't completely of Airbnb, but it is strict rules. Especially within the borough, requiring owners to live on the property like a primary residence or owner occupied B and B. But limiting non-owner rentals due to zoning changes to preserve neighborhood character and address housing concerns. A common trend in PA towns facing influx of tourists. The Vicent State Supreme Court ruling in two thousand nineteen also clarified that the STRs often violate traditional residential zoning. Unless explicitly allowed pushing towns to regulate and to restrict them. So there are more towns and boroughs that are stopping Airbnb. So I'm not for Airbnb. I, I'm never for an Airbnb unless it's in a designated area where we have already agreed to. There. People coming in and out on a regular basis where nobody knows who they are. Long term rentals is long term rental. But an Airbnb, you don't know who's going to be there from one week to the next. And what if that neighborhood has small children playing in the street? Are they safe now? We don't know this. What are their intentions of coming to stay except for just to visit the town? We don't know that. We don't, we're here to protect our citizens. And when we have other people coming in on a regular basis. This is very uncomfortable for me. I know we have one in uptown Columbia and there's a lot of flack about that because that, they're not happy with this. The neighborhood is not happy with that because people, there's four or five cars there. They have all street parking for four vehicles and they're lined up on the street. So there's not just four vehicles there, there are six most of the time there. I live around the corner from it, so I know it. So I'm just saying you have only two parking spaces down there. This is an interruption to the neighborhood, it is a very peaceful one way street. And it's, it's challenging to get parking on that one way street. Cause now everybody has parking in their houses. That's my feel on it, I'm not in favor of Airbnb. But everybody else might feel differently about.
So across the street, directly across the street from my property is a five unit.
I understand that.
If I could please finish. There's a five unit apartment building with a yard. Almost twice the size of mine. That does not. Not only does it not provide parking for its current residents. The landlord himself doesn't care whom he rents to. And at any given time. I was just at my property just now and everyone's not home yet. Any given time to, to, tonight, there will be seven to ten vehicles. From that particular building. And no one from the borough is doing anything about it and it has been problematic, but not just myself. But for the community. Not only, not only does that building, and, and that's a code violation. Period, point blank, fact. There's nothing being done about it. Not only is that a code violation, since I have lived in, in that property, there have been narcotic transactions. Not only have there been narcotic transactions, there've been narcotic investigations. In which the landlord has turned blind eye many times. And there's been police activity, not only has there been police activity, there have been tenants evicted. Because of incidents that they created in the neighborhood against innocent neighbors. In which one of the incidents, I was involved in to protect one of them.
Can we get back to your property?
I'm sorry.
Please.
I, I just take it a little personal because, because it's, we allow, we allow one or some owners to, to do things or get away with. And then when someone else is trying to do the right thing. Now we want to call foul and nothing, I don't mean any offense, I don't mean any harm, but I do have to point that out. That there is an active property that is.
Enough.
That's it. So, and then, but. I have two, I have two parking spaces and I, and, and let me exemplify this. This year I've, I've visited Austin, Texas. I stayed in the Airbnb myself. The host of the Airbnb gave strict instructions. Should we not follow those strict instructions from parking to storage to laundry to. Et cetera, et cetera. Should we not have followed any of those guidelines, procedures, instructions? We would be fined. So in my application, well, not my application, I sent Elise a, an email stating that all short term. All short term residents or occupants. Will be instructed, meaning they have to park in the backyard, in the back, no exception. And if Mr. Rook. Or any other neighbor, any other neighbors that I have good relationships with that will keep eyes out. If they inform me that any of these tenants are not following instructions or if I see, because I have cameras. If I see that they're not following, I will immediately report it, not just to Airbnb, but to the borough and they will be immediately evicted. So I've already documented that they will be instructed in terms of parking. Also, if a family or multiple families are traveling to the prop, are traveling to property, I know tourists, et cetera. One of my, one of my first questions is, are going to be, how many vehicles are you bringing with you? And then there is, I believe there is a limit on people. But it, it goes, the limit, if I can remember, the limit is how many people the property can accommodate. And then, and then we get into low with the fire department, et cetera. But we're not there yet, but that's how the occupancy goes. Um, my, my, I, I'm, my, my property as it stands right now can sleep ten to. I'm limiting it to eight. So two adults, six kids. If we want to look at it that way. But in term, again, in terms of parking, because there already is. Problems with parking. My tenants and no one to do with my property is going to cause any more problems or stress as it is. That's how I live there. I live on that, I live on that block in that property with the mentality of not impeding encroaching. Onto anyone else's property or disrupting anyone else's. Like I came into the neighborhood with other property owners that had been living in this community. At least fifteen years before I moved into the neighborhood. So when I moved in, I had to adjust, adapt to the way of living in Columbia. Not only just in Columbia, but on Chestnut Street, five hundred. I had to do that.
Mr. Williams, how many bedrooms does your property have?
Three, there's a fourth and then, but it's a, a fourth, there's a fourth bedroom, but a fourth of it is taken up by an elevator.
I thought.
It did, it does, which will not be a, a sleeping area and is not, it's not set up as a sleeping area. In fact, I just turned it into my office. My office is on the first floor, I moved my office to the second floor and it's in that room, which makes sense.
Okay, does anyone here have any questions of Mr. Williams at this point?
Basically, I would say, without putting words into your mouth. Wayne. You're looking to have people come into your home in Columbia. For the most part, from outside of Columbia to. Visit Columbia, enjoy Columbia, do whatever there is to see in Columbia or local York area. You've already mentioned that you're not looking, or you're actually putting your foot down, that there's not going to be parties allowed.
No.
We're not going to be having fiftieth anniversary tents up in the back and, and all kinds of music. Because this is what we deal with. You're learning the rules and the regulations, we're already hearing from, not from you. Because you don't have it yet, but from other places that have. Whether it be in Columbia or outside of Columbia.
Sure.
Where tents are thrown up and, and music is, is loud and.
Sure.
The police are called and I'm sure this is why Dave's here. So you've already stated, and I'm not putting any words in your mouth, that there will be no tents being, being put up in the backyard for parties. And we're not having bands coming in. This, this is a home for people to come in from out of town. To settle in for three days, you said, right?
Yeah, I do a three, a three day minimum. So someone could rent it, someone could occupy it for three to seven days. I mean, I don't want to get into fourteen and fifteen days, but. I probably max it at seven days. Just to, just to, to, to give myself a chance. To, because we got to change, we got to change, we got to change this place over. Either I'm going to move back in after a tenant leaves or we'll have a gap in time where another tenant will come in. But we need the time to communicate with the borough, clean the place up, et cetera. And, I mean, yes.
And with your health situation. If you're granted this. In that timeframe in which it has to be, photos are taken for Airbnb and it's cleaned up. You have someone already slated to do that?
I don't have someone right now, currently. However, as time progress, if it did. I, I have, I've interviewed three different management companies. At which point I intend to hire them. When necessary.
Right.
Because the other side is, is I had to pay them a significant amount of money to do what we can do now. I have housekeepers that come by weekly now to clean already for myself. So that's what a management company would do and then they would coordinate repairs if necessary, any emergency incidents while someone's occupied. Well, if I'm, if, if, if I can at least pick up the phone and communicate, I don't need a management company for that. But when it, when the time comes, I've already done my due diligence. In terms of which management company I could pick and I've got more than one option. So if one's not available or closed, whatever, I'm not rambling, looking for another management company. He's a reputable management. Airbnbs, which I prefer, because again, laws, ordinances, so that make sure that we're compliant with both Airbnb and Columbia Borough.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, Dave, you'd like to make some comments?
I think all of you have a copy of White's.
Yes, we do.
Concerns. I want to let you know that Wayne is a friend. I've been in, in my property for twenty-seven years. He's been in his for seven.
You made a point of introducing us.
Pardon me?
You made a point of introducing us one day when I walked up the sidewalk.
He's a good friend, a good neighbor. Um, he's a respectful, mature individual, and I'm so heartbroken that he's got these physical problems that he can't work, or he can't work like he used to work. And, uh, I really am sorry that I have to be looking at the long term of this, his property and my property. I'm going to have to live with whatever happens over there. Uh, so because you're going to vote to recommend to the
Zoning.
zoning board tonight, I'm going to read this to you, if you allow me, about five or six minutes. Is there any questions before I get going? Okay. Uh, the reasons that I am not in favor of this is because, well, I, it'll, it'll, I'll probably say this in there, but every, every project goes in with real good intentions, and at some point, things go south. And it's no, no fault of Wayne's, no fault of anybody's, but I don't want to see that because I'm going to have to live with it. Residential zoning districts are intended to promote long-term occupancy, quiet enjoyment of property, and neighborhood continuity. Short-term rentals function as transient lodging, which is a commercial use and is not consistent with the intent or spirit of residential zoning classifications. Sounds like a lawyer wrote that. The proposed use is not customary, incidental, or subordinate to residential living. A dwelling used for a short-term occupancy by unrelated rotating gas constituted, constitutes a change in use from lodging, introducing impacts that zoning regulations are designed to prevent. Short-term rentals are associated with increased noise outside of normal residential patterns. I can't, I can't have this thing and, and read this at the same because it's too far away. A dwelling used...
Loss of privacy.
Loss of privacy due to frequent turnover of occupants, parking congestion and traffic inconsistent with single-family use, reduced neighborhood safety due to lack of long-term accountability. These impacts directly affect a joint impaired neighborhood, neighboring residents' ability to enjoy their homes. Approval of this application would establish a precedent for similar requests, leading to a cumulative erosion of residential character. Zoning decisions must consider not only the individual request, but the long-term consequences for the neighborhood as a whole. Compliance relies on compliant-driven enforcement after disturbances occur. This reactive approach does not adequately mitigate on nearby residents and places, it places an unreasonable burden on neighbors. So for these reasons, I respectfully request that the planning commission deny approval for this proposal, short-term rental, to preserve the residential integrity, safety, and quality, quality of life of the neighborhood.
And again, we're just, um, either suggesting that we're in favor of it or against it, or not taking any action. It's really up to zoning.
Sometimes we don't make a recommendation.
Right.
Yeah.
Potentially, sometimes we don't though. Either way, we let it completely up to them.
Okay, well, I just wanted to go on record that...
You have every right to do that, Dave.
I want a residential community. I don't want, uh, an Airbnb, or I don't even want a full-time rental next to me.
It sounds like they're way past their three strikes for that property.
Yeah.
That's unfortunate.
If I may, Mr. David, uh, we're together, I mean, I mean, I've, I've damaged his sidewalk. He said, hey, I apologize, and I'll fix it. And Mr. David fixed it, right? Probably because he wanted to do it himself very quickly.
Dave wants to do things his way.
Yes, yes.
I know Dave. That's good.
That we have, we share in common, because we are, I, I, I tend to, I tend to consider myself a younger version of Mr. David, right? Not, not as good, right? I'm still learning, but I do, but I do respect your concern. And for that, I would like to say in front of everyone, should it actually, should this actually get approved, I do in fact intend on following the borough's ordinances to the T. I think at least you, you can attest to that.
We have shared the ordinance and regulations.
And, and I make, and, and, and not only here, but with my other properties outside of Columbia, I have, you, you have to follow guidelines. But guidelines and ordinance aside, whatever you want, i- if this goes through, you can always, you know, you can always come to me and say, hey, I'll prefer this, I don't prefer that, et cetera. And I will accommodate you and Mr. David. Because you guys really mean more to me than ordinance. You know that. And, and, and finances. And I just want everyone to know that because again, uh, we have a lot of respect for each other, and I don't want to lose that respect, and I don't want to lose our friendship with you guys.
Yeah, your only concern though is that should you leave and it's grandfathered in, we can't count on the next person, owner, having that same respect and regard as you obviously do.
So can the borough make that only for me?
Once it's passed, like...
The zoning hearing board could condition.
They can condition that only for him? Okay.
Because I, because I would, I would love that.
I'm glad to hear that.
See, that, that could.
I mean, that, that would be my, that's, that's one of my concerns. But I would feel better if it was conditional that it's only for you.
No, I would love that.
Can that be conditional?
I'm not hundred percent sure, um, being new to this position. Um, but my assumption would be that they, they do make approvals with conditions. Um, I've read indecisions. Um, it could be like a time limit, like we'll only allow this for X amount of years. Um, could be a way that they do it, but I would definitely have to do more research and follow and see what has been done in the past to really hundred percent comment on that, but that's my, my first thought would be, I, I have seen decisions where they have been based on conditional approval.
That being said, um, condition would be important, but if this would go through, then everybody in the borough is going to come in here for a variance, wanting to Airbnb on a detached with all street parking. And there's more in the borough that is not in the median density. So this would open another door that other people think that they can have Airbnb going through the whole town, and that's not what we want.
Right, but zoning is, is case by case.
That's right.
So people can't come in and say, oh, you did that on Chestnut, and now I want it. Um, they're, they're, they're case by case.
And I can, I get both of your points, that concerns, yeah, positions.
No, I, I, I really, please don't give me this, because I really, well, I mean, we've talked about it, I, I had a good time selling my property a couple years ago because I was in a relationship and it says, and there's always been a concern from, from me, even me, look, I put my blood, sweat, and tears in that place to build it to, you know that, to, to get it to accommodate myself and my family. It is my dream home, right? I don't want to sell my house, I didn't want to sell, and we've had this conversation. I don't want to sell my house to someone that's just feeling not respected because I bought it from someone that did. And so, and, and because of that, I had to do like a lot of work to that place just to get it to where it is now. And it's still, I mean, it's a hundred-plus-year-old home. So you had, you, you constantly have maintenance. But the lack of maintenance, when I purchased the home, I mean, I literally had to go through the entire property, interior and exterior, and there's still a lot of things that need to be done, okay? But I am very, very, because of the type of neighbors that I have, I didn't expect to have the neighbors that I have. And, and upon having those neighbors, these are, these are things future, you know, who gets the property, et cetera. Like, just so you guys know, I have a will, and I didn't say it to you.
Mr. Williams, can, can, do you have anything to add?
You'll, you'll want to, for the hearing, you'll want to, I think, kind of have it, yeah, like how, you know, regardless, I, I'll say personally, I don't feel strong enough either way. I see it both ways. I see it, probably see it more like, you have a very personal story behind this that, you know, if it was somebody who didn't live there, didn't have a vested interest in how the property that you put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in, you know, I think that makes the story different. You know, we kind of talked about that with that. I felt more comfortable recommending in favor for a variance, a use variance, because they were going to live in the same place and that sort of thing. I think you kind of are as, trying to be as close to that as you possibly can without actually living there while the guests are there too. So you're really trying to pull off something, you know, a lot of logistics, and then you're trying to work with the borough to, to have this, and you're trying to keep great relationships with your neighbors. So you have a lot of balls in the air, and that's because life has kind of pushed you to that point. So I don't feel really, I don't feel good about a recommendation either way because I, I understand why there's certain places for it. And I'm also, would be somewhat hypocritical, we, we've debated when we're required to give a recommendation to Borough Council on where, if anywhere, to expand Airbnbs in the borough. There were a lot of different opinions, and it wasn't like clearly black and white because I've stayed in them enough to where, you know, we, you know, we were guests, and I would like to think we were good guests, but, and then we still deal with, there's been neighbors that have lived, you know, a few doors down for months or years, and I thought it would have been great if they were just here for a three-night stay. So it's, it's the same, you know, there's a lot of things where it's like, if it works, there's no big deal. But when it doesn't, it's bad, whether it's short-term, long-term, or whatever. You know, so I think the only, you know, I'd say like, maybe the advice I'd give is, is that you're, you're trying to limit the negative impacts. You're trying to pull off something while pulling, while trying to protect negative impacts to your property as well as your neighbors. And I think that's just really what you need to try to crystallize into, here's how I would manage this. Here's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to pull off something very tricky. Here's how I'm going to make this work to try to keep, you know, my neighbors happy and yourself happy. I think that's what I could give in what you're going to present to the zoning hearing board because they're going to look at this like, okay, where's the hardship? I think there's obviously a, a life type of hardship, but in terms of use of the property. Um, so that's really the way that you have to look at this. And you also have to understand that once it's, you know, once it's posted, it may have already been, you know, obviously, any of the direct neighbors can become party to the case and can, you know, oppose it, can, can do whatever. Um, you know, so I think it just makes it really difficult. But the more, like, you kind of have your ducks in a row, and maybe even looking at something to where you're trying to limit this to this period in life, and while you own it or something might help the case, not just in front of the zoning hearing board, but with your neighbors too.
Any further comments?
That was very well said.
And in regard to the parking, Wayne indicated that he has the parking spaces in front of his garages, and he does. But there's no way for someone on that property to get from their parking spaces up into their yard and to the house.
Right. You have to go through the garage.
My walkway, and it's fine, I'm glad that he can use it. But I don't want two, two strangers and four kids coming up through there a couple times a day.
That's completely understandable.
And there's no, he doesn't have a walk from the lodge up to the house. And so they're likely to, to want to use mine. They're not going to be allowed to use it unless they are on, it's a good term for three days.
No, to your point.
I've put a tone out.
They're there a couple days. And I was thinking, well, I was thinking of food.
We know what Marilyn would vote for. Which is, you know, I mean, you bring an important perspective, especially from real estate and whatnot. But I, I'm not going to make a motion, I don't...
So do we want to make a recommendation to zoning or let this go with no recommendation? Those in favor of no recommendation signify by saying aye.
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 I agree with Justin, what you said and recommended and how you present it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this is a very, very case sensitive thing, unique.
We don't know, and we don't know how the zoning hearing board's going to take all of the testimony.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And are you going to ask for conditions?
But I would, I would definitely ask for conditions. So if you don't mind looking into that and seeing, I appreciate that your will like to do that. I appreciate that.
No recommendation.
And I'm, I'm really sorry about your diagnosis. I think you got great care.
Okay. Moving on on the agenda, we have no engineers reviews, no, no demolition applications. Do we have any public comment or questions?
Any other public comment or questions?
Frank has something to say.
Yes.
Yes. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Dave.
Take good care. Great to see you.
Sorry, Frank.
Nice to meet you. It's great to meet you too.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
Thank you for coming.
We have no action items.
Thank you, Wayne.
Under discussion items here, are we good with picking up packets at the Borough Hall?
Yes.
If they are too large to be sent electronically? And I said, I told Elise, I said, I want this on the agenda. We kind of discussed this on the side last month, and I said, I want everyone here that we can go on record how we want to handle packets going forward.
I think you might have to remind us the first time or second time.
Yeah, if you put out an email, yeah, right, right.
Anytime, when I post the agenda online, I will send an email saying, the agenda is completed, I'm going, your packets will be ready to deliver, or...
To pick up.
Okay, that's a good idea.
And if we don't pick them up, then they'll be here, like if you just say, oh, it's a small agenda, I'll just look at it on the computer, they'll be here.
So we're picking them all up? Not, not if they're large or small? They're all going to be here for pickup? You're not going to deliver any?
I will not deliver, what we, that's up for you guys to decide. I can either deliver them or we can have them picked up at the office regardless of the size. I think last time when we discussed it, after the meeting, it was discussed that we would have, we would pick up, have them readily available to pick up at the office. However, if it were a small packet, they would just be... Uh however, it's in a small packet, they would just be given day of after meeting.
Right. And you would let us know that in the meeting?
Okay. I mean, would this, would this have been considered a pickup?
So this right, this would have been picked up, you would have been able to pick it up.
Close to the pictures.
Okay, okay. And I don't mind picking up, because I'm downtown and then I come in to drop off a timesheet anyway, so.
And I will still send, because I currently send a digital copy of the packets via email, I will still send a digital copy. This is just for if you would like a physical copy of that evening's packet, they will be readily available to pick up at the office the Friday before the meeting.
I think it's fine.
That's great.
Honestly, I would rather pick it up, because before you and not recently, but in the past, you're, you're too young, but they're.
You wouldn't remember.
All the rest of us will remember the paper boys that from their, from their bicycle, they just went like that and it hit the door and it, and it went down, and it seemed as if that was the situation, and our packets, if it was pouring out and driving, they're soaked.
Right, I tried, I tried it with the doors.
Between the doors, yeah.
Which was great. We appreciated that, because
I didn't know it was outside. I almost fell them.
That are next-door neighbor.
And I fell, because I didn't know it was there.
We're all talking now. We have, we have, and we're still live, right?
Yeah, we're still live. Storytime is live.
Okay.
I, I appreciate picking them up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see picking them up.
We step out and we're stepping on them.
Okay, we have no old business, new business. What I will confirm is at last week's council meeting, there was discussion regarding the appointments and reappointments, and they will be done at next week's council meeting. And it will be Deb's reappointment, yes, it will be Deb's reappointment, your reappointment. Barb Fisher will be appointed to fill Nathan's term. And with Marilyn, what was suggested is administratively, she will resign and be reappointed for that change in end of term.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yeah. I was able, because they questioned me, okay, if we do this, then, and I was able to go down and tell them who would be having terms expire when. So they were comfortable with that, that they felt the cleanest thing with, with Marilyn would be to do a resignation and then an appointment to that twenty-sixth, yeah. Okay, so that's where we stand with that. Next meeting will be January twentieth, twenty twenty-five. At that time, we will be doing election of officers for the year. And I would wish you all Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. And I don't know if I'm gonna be here December thirty-first or is there any hearing? Do I have a? Yes. We didn't adjourn yet.
It was just brought to uh and I think these people come through planning that wanted to put a laundromat in the alley at the Stover Building.
Yes.
Uh my understanding of what I was told, it was, it was passed, everything was good to go, and now that was annulled, and I'm trying to find out where this is going right now.
It was what?
It was
Scrap.
There was, there were some issues that come up since that was a uh one of them was events, the vents in the building.
Okay.
The other thing, uh the owner of the Henkels, the developer, he's complaining they're gonna take his parking. That's two of the issues that I heard. Now, I don't know how true this is. I haven't gone to a meeting, but this was just told to me. I'm just curious where it's at. Now, the people that had this okay, they have to bring their architect back and they have to go through the process again. So I, I don't think they have to come here, but I thought maybe yous might know where it's at, what's going on with it.
I have no idea, Frank.
Okay.
No idea.
I just saw that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, like the people with parking, the Henkels parking lot to go there. Gotcha.
Okay. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, I have Dustin and Tiff all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at eight eighteen.
Yeah, it was.
Take good care.